Hey everybody. Welcome to the Agenda 4 of the meeting for June 17, 2015. Call the meeting to order. The Agenda meeting to order. We have ordinances on second reading, 501. Orders authorizing the guarantee by the City of New Brunswick and County of Middlesex, David Jersey, of not exceeding 26 million aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue and refunding bond Series 2015 of the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick. 502, orders to amend supplement revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title 16 Land Development Code. Resolutions 537 approved generally, 538 approved payroll, 539 authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates, 540 approved request for use of city property requested by the ABC Foundation. Location is Bublo Park Jogging Path for walk for Diane, 5K walk to benefit ABC Foundation. Date is Sunday, October 25, 2015. The time is 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. 541 approved place transfer of liquor license license moving from parking to the location of the former Vertigee Lounge from New Brunswick Investment Group Incorporated to 25 Liberty Street liquor license number 1214-33024004. 542 approved amendment of resolution R.0215-33, reason to pay two outstanding final invoices for 2014 with U.S. Health Force Medical Group of New Jersey, PC, for 2014 physician services, not exceed $420. 543 approved amendment of resolution R.011-576, reason additional funds for the June 2015 invoice with excellent U.S. Healthcare Traditional and Paws Contract. Term is July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, not exceed 855335. 544 approved amendment of resolution R.051-521, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,0060650 to Benedict Allinger, Police Director, and who knows the matter Victor Rodriguez versus City of New Brunswick entities at all from $7,004 to $8,061050. 545 approved request to division of agricultural control to act of renewal of voluntary retail consumption license for New Brunswick Lox, 324, DPO Elks liquor license number 1214-33023001. Period is July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. 546 approved ABC liquor license renewals, 2015 to 2016. 547 authorized joint application, execution, acceptance of grant for 2015 with three other York City County municipalities, U.S. Department of Justice for FY 2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG program. 548 authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract A 83909, radio communication equipment and accessories from Motorola Solutions Incorporated for nine portable radios and accessories for the Police Department, not exceed $25,17075. 549 approved award contract with Dan Swazie and Son Incorporated for 2015 traffic line strengthening specification number 887-15, not exceed 392724. 550 approved award contract with DOT Design LLC furnished delivered T-shirts per 12 month period commencing June 18, 2015 and June 17, 2016. Specification number 435-15P, not exceed 1897110. 551 approved request for city property requested by Nation of Islam Mohammed Mosque, number 85, location is Easter Park for community festival and charity basketball game to promote unity in New Brunswick. The date is Saturday, August 22, 2015. The ring date is Saturday, August 29, 2015. The time is 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. 552 approved renewal of agreement with Cigna Healthcare, HMO. Term is July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. 553 approved Chapter 159 budget insertion, State of New Jersey Department of Transportation. The Terminal Road Project, the amount is $343190. 554 authorized mayor and city clerk to execute a sub-grant agreement with State of New Jersey laws of emergency management for hazard mitigation grant generator project for three fire stations. 555 approved Chapter 159 budget insertion in the New Jersey Courts Rockwalk Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund, the amount is $3,071279. 556 authorized refund to TT LPL LLC. Need a couple more L's in there. Block 183, Block 024, A Jersey Avenue, against utilities in the amount of $82979. We have no lighters to discuss for the council. Now call the meeting to order. Recurrent needs to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Barlati will be here late. Councilmember, Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised. Where's my paperwork? I don't have it recited off the top of my head, but I know something about it. It was posted in the board of the Board of the Lobby. It placed the whole news. Boom, uh-oh. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice on time and place and conduct of all public meetings in the municipal councils received in New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate board and board in the Lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick, natively the whole news Tribune. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we'll have a moment of silence for men and women serving in our armed forces, for all our men and women in the armed forces who have lost their lives in battle and any conflict. Thank you. We have minutes from May 20, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? In a second?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
We have public hearings. Council, City Attorney, correct?
With respect to the first one, Mr. Council President, Persev Inc., trading as Meteor Bar, that matter was carried to July 1, Mr. Gustafson's request. He does have two other matters on that particular meeting night. So this third one will be carried to that particular meeting at 5:30.
Number two?
Yes, with respect to number two, we have now scheduled a time for public hearing on LaFamosa Inc., trading as LaFamosa, relative to the continuation of special conditions placed on this license at the time of renewal. I will note for the record, Mr. Michael Gass is here on behalf of the licensee. I have opportunity to speak to Mr. Gass relative to this particular hearing. I think he wants to address the council. My understanding that he's aware of the special conditions that were imposed last time. I've advised him that the Police Department, Detective DeBrau is here somewhere, I saw his face over there, but is recommending the reimposition of the same special conditions. And we will probably be appropriate to hear from Mr. Gass after I actually read the conditions just for the public.
Sure.
Then if someone's here wants to speak about LaFamosa, they can as well. Special conditions that were placed at the time of renewal for the last license year, which are now pending for this particular license year are as follows. Number one, licensee shall control loitering in the area adjacent to the licensed premises by posting signs and/or by calling police for assistance. Number two, licensee shall provide distinctive attire for security personnel, which identifies their status as security personnel. Number three, licensee shall maintain a video camera on the exterior licensed premises and shall annotate all film for time and date and maintain said tapes for at least 15 days. Number four, licensee shall not alter the premises from the layout shown in the sketch plan previously filed with the city clerk without first obtaining the approval of council by resolution. And number five, licensee shall be in compliance with ordinance O-029609 as amended relative to educational requirements for owners and managers. Having said that, I know Mr. Gass would like to just address the council, I believe, briefly.
Yeah, very brief. Mr. Gass, can I get you to step over to the microphone, please?
Sure.
And could you please, your name and the firm you're with, please?
Yes, members of the council, Michael Gass, Shammy Shipers and Wonski at Livingston Avenue in New Brunswick for the licensing. Very briefly, we certainly encourage the council to approve the conditions. My client, and I know the Police Department, I believe, will confirm this. They run a very tight ship over there. There have been absolutely no violations. They've got multiple cameras. They have security in place. And they don't tolerate difficult or problem customers. And we would ask that the conditions continue. I think they're a model of conforming to the needs of the community and the city.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody from the public like to address the council as far as this applicant is concerned? Please step to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Representative Council, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I live in the neighborhood. Don't know much about the bar, but I do want to ask, the firm that the attorneys win is Shammy Shipers and Wonski, is there any relation to?
No, Mr. Cradaville, that's not my firm. It's a second cousin, once you move into my father, unfortunately is deceased, so it's not even...
Not a conflict?
Not a conflict, sir.
Just checking, doing my job. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Shammy, should we act on this right now and get a motion to approve the conditions?
Well, what I would suggest the council do, the license is not ready for renewal at this time. It's the council's inclination as a result of the hearing, which is required to have a hearing to renew with these special conditions. We can just make that acknowledgement now. And when the resolution is formally adopted, you can expect to see these special conditions there. At that time will be your formal action to renew with the special conditions.
And they're the same conditions that exist now.
Correct.
As to the past few meetings.
That's correct.
So no action, no action necessary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Gass.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number three, sir?
With respect to the third hearing that we have on this evening is the licensee known as the Platinum Lounge LLC, trading as Perle and Glow. This particular license as well has special conditions on it. The hearing has been set for this particular evening with respect to the reimposition of these special conditions. I will note for the record, for the council's benefit, I did receive a copy of a letter that was sent to Mr. Terese, the city clerk, from Mr. Gesara, who represents the licensee, indicating that he does not intend to appear and he does not intend to object to any special conditions that were imposed on this particular license in the past in connection with the renewal for the upcoming license year. So for purposes of the public's benefit and perhaps of the council, I'll just read these special conditions, going to open it up to public comment if there are any, and then we can move on. Okay?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shammy.
Number one, the licensee shall limit its maximum occupancy for the licensed premises to a total of 399 persons. Number two, the licensee will cease a practice of conducting teen nights or 18 to enter 21 to drink events at the licensed premises. Three, the licensee shall comply with all New Jersey state statutes, New Jersey ABC regulations, and local City of New Brunswick ordinances regarding advertisements and promotions relative to events at the licensed premises. Number four, the licensee acknowledges that the New Brunswick Police Department and/or the New Brunswick Fire Department are permitted to and will conduct periodic inspections of the licensed premises at the respective department's sole discretion, and the licensee shall comply with all requests of the respective department during said inspection. The licensee shall not allow, permit, and/or suffer in, excuse me, or about the licensed premises, the consumption of alcoholic beverages by persons under the legal age to consume alcoholic beverages. And six, the conditions applied upon the licensee shall continue at the annual renewal of same, and the licensee hereby consents to and agrees to the within conditions, subject to modification and/or removal of part or all of said conditions by the City Council of the City of New Brunswick at the City Council's sole discretion.
Thank you. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradaville, step right up.
Thank you once again, Charles Cradaville in Brunswick. I want to ask, because I know the tavern report came out on April 14, about a week later, there was a shooting at this establishment or out front of this establishment. Is that something the council is considering? Or is it not going to be considered because it doesn't fall in the timeframe that the tavern report covers?
First of all, does anybody know that something like that happened?
I don't know the particulars of the incident. I heard there was an incident. Every incident that may occur in or about a licensed premises in the city is investigated by the police and the ABC unit. I understand that if there were charges to be filed for violation of any regulations or statutes, that the ABC unit could do that. We're still a couple of weeks away from the end of the license year, but they can be filed at any time. And should it so were, those charges, you know, could impact the license renewal at a later time. Or in fact, it's egregious enough, this council's not acting on the renewal tonight. Obviously, we're not ready to do that at this point, but that could be revisited.
Okay. So, Mr. Cradaville, if the ABC comes back before we formally adopt the license for the Perle Lounge and Glow, we'll have to talk to our attorney and see if we're going to apply something different or whatever happens if that comes through at that time.
Yeah, I would urge the council to look carefully at any shootings that may have taken place in the past couple of months, especially since so recent. I would also like to raise another concern that the representative of the bar is not here. Is this, this is the public hearing?
It is, it is. But he wrote a letter stating that he wouldn't be here, that he was fine with all the regulations that you just heard, sanctions that are placed on this establishment at this time.
And is the council considering any new or additional special conditions for this establishment?
Not at this, not at this time, sir.
Okay, well, I would encourage you to look into that.
Well, like I said, if there's some new things that come to light from now until we approve the thing, we will act on the advice of our city attorney and the Police Department and the ABC, and we will move in the direction that we think we need to take at that time.
And so when is that scheduled? When are you supposed to approve this?
Mr. Shammy?
I don't believe it's ready to be approved, and so I wouldn't know when it's going to be agendized. Liquor license establishments, and Mr. Terese could probably answer this question better than me, have to pay their fee, they have to get a tax clearance letter from the state, et cetera, fill out their applications. I don't know exactly where it is in the process.
Mr. Terese, do you have any anticipation of a timeline, maybe, for something like those?
The ABC has converted their licensing process to a digital licensing process. So they've extended the renewal period from the usual deadline of June 30 to the deadline of September 18. That's to give everyone a fair chance to learn the system and to renew their license properly. So I would say anytime between the next council meeting and the first council meeting in September will be when they could renew.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I would urge the council to think twice before renewing the status quo here. Obviously, something more is needed. I'd also just like to raise a concern. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be good faith that the establishment hasn't sent someone to this meeting to hear what concerns might, the council might have or members of the public might have. And is this, as you said, is this the same, same Mr. Gesara who used to be the Police Director in New Brunswick?
I believe it is, but Mr. Shammy would know better than me. Mr. Shammy?
His turn.
The third representative, yes.
He used to be the Police Director. He's the one who was famously indicted, yes.
I don't know his history, but I'll say yes to the first part.
Okay. Well, I think he should show his face. I think he should come here, and I think he should defend the business that is hired in to represent, represent them and hear from the community as well as the council. And I would urge you not to approve any continuing of the status quo until such time that the establishment sends a representative here to meet with yourselves and the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question about the establishment, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Come on up. That's why I'm coming.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly. I am the mother of four Shamachit, who last Tuesday was attacked by New Brunswick Police Department. Excuse me, this has something to do with that.
Okay.
Okay? However, this is where they came from. So if this establishment has all these things going on, why are you guys still allowing it to be open? Where these children or these people, these college students, however, come from this place, go to another place to go eat, and this is what happened? And then I just hear that he was a police officer who owns this establishment?
So he represented the establishment.
Oh, he represented. Okay. So this is all connected some way or another, correct?
I don't know where you mean that.
You don't understand what I'm saying to you?
No.
What I'm saying to you is if this establishment has all these problems and/or issues, why is it still being allowed to be open?
Ma'am, it's being open, but it's under, has, under conditions it's being open.
The conditions are sickening because this is not the first situation or issue you guys have with this establishment. And I'm sure you know that.
No, I don't know that.
So you're saying that you only just have one issue with this establishment?
I didn't say that.
Okay, so I know that you understand that there's more than one issue with this establishment. It should not still be open if things are still going on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any other comments on the Glow Perle Lounge?
Thank you. Well, I have concluded the public hearing on this particular license.
Thank you very much, sir. We have ordinances on second reading, 501. Orders authorizing the guarantee by the City of New Brunswick and County of Middlesex, David Jersey, of not exceeding 26 million aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue and refunding bond Series 2015 of the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on this particular ordinance?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville. Can I just ask, for starters, what is the purpose of this? Is refinancing the existing debt of the parking authority, is that fair to say?
That's my understanding of it, but maybe someone from the parking authority, Mr. Carr? Mr. Carr?
Yes, this is to refinance the 2006 series bonds.
Thank you.
And so that will involve borrowing an additional 26 million? Is that fair to say, correct?
No, that, that, what you're doing is taking the money you're paying off in 2006, and hopefully you're getting a better rate of action by law. You have to save at least 3%. So you're taking the money from the bank, paying off in 2006, and you're opening up a new series out of it.
It's like refinancing a house.
Gotcha, so it's not new debt?
It's not new debt, you're taking old debt, selling that and getting a better deal with the new deal in 2015.
Okay. I do have a concern about something. I just looked through the documents, what's it called here? Preliminary official statement, City of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, I believe it's the same, this is $25.1 billion. It says here, "The city previously failed to timely file in accordance with the rule," and this is referring to a Securities and Exchange Commission rule, I guess, or actually Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. It says, "Failed to timely file under proper filing requirements. Its annual financial information for fiscal years ended December 31, '09, '10, '11, '12, and '13. Also failed to file, failed to timely file its most current annual debt statement for the fiscal years ending those same years. Also failed to timely file notice of previous rating changes relating to prior undertakings for the City of New Brunswick School District. And also failed to timely file annual financial information on certain City of New Brunswick Parking Authority and Housing Authority, CUSIPS, for which the city is an obligated party for the fiscal years of those same years. Additionally, the city acknowledges that it previously failed to file material event notices and late filing notices in connection with timely filing of annual financial information and ratings changes. And can you tell me what exactly that means? How did the city make these mistakes? And what's been done to make sure that they don't get made again?
Mr. Carr, can you elaborate on that?
Mr. Peddix?
Mr. Peddix, I'm the city senator.
Sure.
Bruce is blocking you.
Okay.
Do you stand up?
Sure. Actually, the SEC rules have always been in place, but they haven't been as stringent as they have been for corporations. Most corporations have to file 10Qs, 10Ks on a periodic basis. There has been periodically a requirement for us to continue disclosure, because once we sell bonds, the information that we have is current as of the time of selling the bonds. But there is an obligation to continue to give information, especially of material events, to anybody that might be holders of our bonds. So I would have to say, for the 19 years that I've been here in the City of New Brunswick, we have been filing, maybe not timely, but we have been filing where other municipalities haven't even been filing. So about three or four years ago, they came up with a new system called Emma, where all of this now electronically is being filed, as opposed to sending it to depositories that we used to have to in the past. With regard to the timeliness, it's only as timely as the information I received. So if the audit hasn't been received by us, we can't, I can't send it into Emma, but we have been sending the required information that's, that's been required here. With regard to the rating, that one, I would have to say was my misinterpretation, and that has to do with the school bonds and the state, and it has to do with the state's rating. I never perceived that when the state of New Jersey's rating changed, that it was something that I had to file with regard to the school. Apparently, that was my misinterpretation. I would think in public notice, somebody in the market would see that the state of New Jersey's rating has changed. But because they guaranteed our type 1 school, school bonds, it was an obligation on my part to actually report that to the rating agencies. With regard to any filings from the Housing Authority or the Parking Authority, again, that's probably, they filed, but it's probably filed not as timely as they were supposed to. And the problem is also that each of our official statements had different dates with regard to when this information has to be filed. You would think that over the years, and this is something I'm going to work on with not only our organization but statewide, that there would be certain statutory requirements for certain dates. If the audit isn't even required to be given to us until June 30, how would you have some date prior to that placed in your official statement for filing the audit that you haven't even received yet? So those are the things that we're working on. A good year or so ago, you approved the hiring of Phoenix Advisors. Phoenix Advisors were the one that actually went through all of our requirements to make sure we were current with anything with regard to the SEC. The SEC knew that all municipalities, not only in New Jersey but throughout the country, had an issue with regard to this, and they actually said you could sort of fall on your sword, you could admit that something was wrong, and we did that, so we cleaned that up. And I've been working with Phoenix Advisors to continue our disclosure prospectively.
Were any penalties or anything?
Because we did what we were supposed to do, there were no penalties imposed.
So we weren't sanctioned?
No, no. We weren't, and actually, the SEC was very...
I anticipated that was Mr. Cradaville's next question, so...
No. Thank you, Mr. Egan.
I don't want to scare and start a thing like you. Mr. Cradaville.
Well, thank you for anticipating. Can you just tell me a little bit about Phoenix Advisors? How was that company selected? And how much are we paying for their services?
Mr. Peddix, please?
For Phoenix Advisors was the recommendation of our bond counsel, Lawrence Goldman and Spitzer, and the cost was $1,000 for that service, $1,000 a year.
Thank you.
$1,000 a year, okay. And are they from Phoenix?
Are they from Phoenix or is that the name?
That's just the name.
Where are they located, you know?
Actually, they're down in South Jersey.
Which is almost like Phoenix.
And one other thing, CUSIPS, what does that stand for? It's not clear.
What is it?
C, CUSIPS.
Do you know what that stands for, Mr. Peddix?
I'm sorry, Mr. Egan, I don't.
It's okay, we'll find out. We'll get that information, we'll get it to you.
Thank you. And so the other concern I have is under litigation, it says something to the effect of, the city attorney says there's no major lawsuits pending that could affect the fiscal health of the city, or pending or threatened. Is that, is that really true? There's no lawsuits that could have a big payoff that would affect the fiscal health of the city?
Mr. Shammy?
We have insurance, insurance body covers our exposure on the publicity.
That's why we have insurance in the ground.
That's why we would say that.
That's why we're on the same side.
Because we're covered by insurance.
Okay, but I mean, wasn't there just a settlement a couple of meetings ago that was not covered by insurance?
True.
Yes, there was.
So are there any others that could fall into that category? I'm not sure what our insurance covers.
Mr. Shammy?
That was one of maybe three that I've been involved with.
Since you've been in the...
Since I did in the city attorney's office, which is a long...
So that happens very... So that happens very, very many, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, um, well, I suppose those are all the questions I have about this.
Thank you. Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We have ordinance on first reading, five oh two, and ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the Street of Brooklyn, Title sixteen, Land Development Code.
Move the ordinance, set it down July first, for public hearing, same date, clarify.
And second?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We have resolutions, we have five thirty-seven to five fifty-six. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of the resolutions this evening? Please step up to the microphone. Also, the five-year rule, sir, just to remind you, please, Mr. Cradville.
Thank you, sir. I'll start, uh, with five four one, number five, uh, place-to-place transfer of liquor license.
Five forty-one, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just tell me, uh, what the, uh, what's happening there? Is there going to be a new business opening and how much...
Uh, yes, there is. Uh, yeah, I, I've read some of this, uh, this, uh, there's a new business opening there. Uh, I, I don't know the name of the business, uh, maybe Mr. Teresi can help us, uh, a little bit more?
I, I don't know the name offhand, but, uh, it's a, a new business that's opening up. It's a liquor license establishment.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, Mr. Sham.
The applicant is New Brunswick Investment Group, LLC, I believe.
New Brunswick Investment Group, LLC, I believe one of the partners of the group in my reading is a, uh, also is a partner or some partner owner of a hotel, a restaurant, I believe, in New Brunswick, in my reading. Uh, and, uh, they are taking, uh, a pocket license and moving it into the Verde Green Lounge, if you're familiar with that, was on Liberty Street. And I don't think, I don't know, we don't know the name of the establishment yet, though. But I believe it, it seems to help us have the same, pretty much the same footprint inside that was existing there before, from what I can read from my, some eyes.
Thank you, Paul Ianbrook. Can you just tell me, how much was the liquor license sold for?
It was sold.
It wasn't sold, it's been something...
It was a pocket license.
The, uh, five four five, the number nine, um, this, uh, DPO Elks Lodge, uh, can you tell me what the purpose of this resolution is?
Uh, Mr. Teresi? Uh, because there are several members of the Elks Lodge that are also members of the governing body, uh, the governing body is not permitted to renew the license. They can only recommend a renewal, and the renewal is actually done by the state of New Jersey.
Okay, so the city is going to recommend the renewal of the license?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, can you tell me, uh, or maybe you could ask the fire official, is the, is that building up to code? Is it up to fire code?
Is the fire director here or anybody, or was it Dominic, sir, that my name? Can you tell us?
It's up to code.
Yes, sir. Yes.
It's up to code, there's no, no violations, just...
Kind of expected this year, they were expected, they can say counter, so they won't be do open talk.
So lastly, strategy, everything was up to code, it's...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um... I think that's, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Seeing none? Second? Second?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Would anybody like to address the council this evening? We have five minutes to address the council, please step up to the microphone. Uh, if there's somebody in front of you, just wait until they're done, and you can step up right behind them. Once again, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, Ken. I would like to know what are we doing as far as police brutality in the community?
What are we doing as far as police brutality?
Police brutality in the community. If that's that occur with police and civilians, what are we doing to enforce laws and rules to protect the civilians?
Uh, Mr. Captain Zabo, could you, uh, help us out, Dad?
What am I doing? That's a kind of broad statement, but, um, obviously we do have...
How can we? What, what are we doing? What is the state, the council?
Yeah, man, yeah, we have the, through the chair, ask the questions.
Okay.
Okay? What's the question?
What, what is the council doing? What is the city doing to protect the civilians from police brutality?
Well, the city has a bunch of programs, and I believe that Captain Zabo will tell you. Go ahead, Captain.
Um, as far as, it's, like I said, it's a very broad statement, um, I don't know if there's this, a specific incident that you're gonna address, I'm, that's what I'm assuming, but, of course, police brutality, we do not tolerate it, and we never would.
Well, there's a video of police brutality, so what are we doing about that?
What is the video, man?
Parisha match, it occurred Tuesday evening.
I saw that video.
Yes.
Um, I know you had an appointment with internal affairs today at eleven a.m.
Yes, I did.
Had to be rescheduled by you.
On Wednesday, yes.
Okay. And they are gonna go over that case with you at that time?
What about other people? There were other people that things occurred to. What are we doing to, uh, slow down the police brutality? What programs are available? Because you said there are programs, but what programs?
A program towards police brutality?
Well, you used to...
Again, we, there's no program, it's, it's untalented.
Okay, so training?
It's untalented.
What type of training is involved for these new officers or officers who's been on a force for a very long time?
Officers are trained, I'm sorry. Officers are trained, obviously, in ethics and right from wrong, which is very basic as far as police brutality. Again, it's something that we're not gonna tolerate. If you have a case, or if you know of other videos that you'll bring into our attention in Brunswick, gladly, anyone that has them, bring it to our police headquarters or internal affairs department and we'll investigate it, just like we always would.
Okay. Also, um, when we have, when the council meetings are held, uh, how much notices put out there? Where is the notices put so that the community, the community can be involved?
Notices are put in the Home News Tribune and the Volta Room, City Hall in Brunswick. The council meets the first and third Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
From Memorial Day to Labor Day, we meet at five thirty p.m. From after Labor Day, we meet at six thirty p.m. Right here in this room, every first Wednesday and third Wednesday of every month.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anyone else?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. Um, I gotta ask, I, uh, I'll start with the smaller thing, the construction site on College Avenue, um, what is going on there? I brought it up at the last meeting. What's been done to make that safer since somebody fell into the site?
Uh, can anybody answer that? Has anything been done? Is anybody here from code enforcement? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Cradville, on Friday, saying that the gate was open, which it was, and they were working there. Uh, it's a construction site, they're building the Hill House.
The White Hill House?
Yeah, the White Hill House. Okay, the building department went out there, they were using that gate to bring in stuff. I was told that, uh, when they're not working in the block area on College Avenue, that gate is closed, and it's been closed. It's a construction site, Charlie. The gentleman you're talking about was trying to climb over the fence and fell in the hole. So it was trespassing. So, let's hold back for what it was. And, uh, as far as I know, if I go back by there today, uh, the gate was closed, I think all their stuff comes in off of Line Street, and that's what the building department was called by the construction manager on site.
Thank you, sir.
Can you tell me, are there any no trespassing signs?
I, I don't know, sir. Do you know if there's any no trespassing signs on there?
I can't answer that, I don't recall seeing them, thanks.
Wouldn't that be a reasonable, uh...
Request?
Yeah, wouldn't that make sense?
We'll see, we can have a little, we'll see if somebody puts a no trespassing signs on the fence.
Okay, just 'cause, again, I walked past the gate, it was literally wide open, no one there, anyone, any pedestrian could walk in off the street into the construction site.
We'll see, we'll see that there's, someone take, write that down, please, and we can see the owner of the property. Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, can you tell me about some of these, uh, police officers that are, uh, getting a, sort of a, a new job and their retirement? Um, last week, we talked about Mr. Barber, didn't see the council's aware, but he's been hired by the city, um, to, to work for the police department in a new job?
Well, no one has told me about that, sir, but, uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Lockwood, could you elaborate? Are you familiar with the...
Yes, Mr. Barber, uh, retired Trenton police officer, was retained in an office services manager position at the recommendation of the, uh, police director.
Thank you.
Was the position advertised?
It was not. He did, uh, I believe, uh, interview multiple, um, uh, candidates, but, uh, it was not, it was not advertised in the paper or on a website, no.
So he interviewed a couple people that he knew?
He didn't say that, he said he interviewed some people.
Okay.
That was your, that was you, he said.
But, but I'm saying, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't ask around, he didn't, he didn't put it, put it advertising out there.
That's right, that's correct, that's what the legislature said, it was not advertised. But he did interview other people.
Does the city support this, uh, having, you know, the police director hire his friends without telling you and without advertising it?
Sir, we, we don't have any, uh, uh, how am I gonna say this? We don't have any participation, uh, uh, who the police, uh, who the police director wants to hire. We don't have any participation as far as the police, who, when they hire police officers. It's all done on the list, it's all done through the police department.
Right, is this a civil service position where he was hired off a list? No.
No, it was not.
Right. So, uh, my question still stands, are you okay with this? Are you okay with the police?
Yes.
The police, you're okay with the police hiring people without telling you, uh, without advertising it?
They've been doing it for years, Mr. Cradville. The police hire civilian people without our permission, day in and day out. Day in and day out.
And, and you don't think, as an elected official, that you should have some oversight of who the police department hires?
That, that I do not, I do not have that oversight.
To civilian jobs?
We don't have that oversight, sir. We do not have that oversight.
Does, the council doesn't oversee the budget of the City of New Brunswick?
I, you, I, you didn't ask me that.
Well, I mean, hiring someone must, surely must be budgeted for, right? If your council doesn't approve the budget, it doesn't get approved, the guy's not hired.
Okay.
So I would suggest, I would suggest you're wrong, and you do have the power, you do have the oversight, you're electing not to exercise that power and not to, uh, use that power, um, to, to be the watchdog that you need to be.
That, that's your position, Mr. Cradville. That, what else?
Uh, how about the other retired police officer that the city has rehired now for the third time, Mr. Michael Bakor?
I'm not familiar with hiring Michael Bakor. Mr. Lockwood?
Mr. Bakor was rehired as a municipal court, um, security officer. I think, maybe through, um, Jennifer Bradshaw, who provided this information, Mr. Cradville, already.
Okay. And was his position advertised?
It was not.
And, uh, why, why was he, uh, he, uh, why, why did he have to leave in the first place? Cause he was in that position a few months ago, or I guess last, uh, last year, he had to leave because he, the city had rehired him too quickly? Is that what it was?
I don't, I don't know that answer, Mr. Cradville. Mr. Lockwood?
There was, uh, some concern that maybe his separation when he retired as a police officer was not lengthy enough. There is not, uh, an awful lot of, um, uh, regulation, uh, dealing with police officers or firefighters in terms of the rehire, with the, the rehire in a civilian position. For someone like myself, if I retired, I, I would have to have been separated for at least a hundred and eighty days. Uh, the issue for police and fire is not, uh, that crystal clear. Um, there was some concern that maybe, uh, his rehire was, uh, might run afoul of pension regulation. He stepped to the side again, um, sat out a hundred and eighty days, I believe, and, um, again, the police department recommended his hire. He seemed to be a good candidate for the position. We approved it over here in City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, and so a hundred and eighty days has been established now as the, the length of time, uh, that, that one would have to wait to have a bona fide separation from the city?
I didn't, I didn't say that.
He didn't say that, sir.
It is for civilian retirements, but I, I can't say that's...
He said it was not clear with police and fire, so he decided to stay out a hundred and eighty days.
So was the, uh...
There's no, there's no...
Mr. Bakor's decision to do that voluntarily.
Correct.
Okay, um, well, I don't know. If the city's already gotten in some trouble for maybe running afoul of pension rules, why did you hire Mr. Barber, who has been out of work for less than a hundred and eighty days? Wouldn't that seem to be repeating the same mistake? Or is it, is there something missing? Is it, is it a different situation?
It's a different situation when there's a change of jurisdiction.
So because he worked for Trenton, it's, correct, a hundred and eighty days doesn't apply? Okay. Well, I am, uh, nevertheless concerned about, um, these, uh, positions being created and, and people being hired without proper oversight. Can you tell me, um, I heard this is part of some kind of restructuring of the police department, of the administration department within the police department? Can, uh, you ask the police to clarify what, what's going on with the restructuring? What, what does that mean?
Captain Zabo, if you have any information on restructuring?
How far the administration? You scare me, cause I don't know anything that, or restructuring, what do you, what do you mean, sir?
Oh, it's been, uh, explained to me that, that Mr. Barber's hiring to this newly created, unadvertised position is part of a restructuring of the administration department.
Who said that, please?
Um, I'm pretty sure she...
Okay. Mr. Cradville, you have something?
That was me, I said that. Um, that was in an email, uh, to Mr. Cradville last week. Captain Miller also addressed it in another email to him this week as well. to him this week as well. I don't recall what he said in the email, but I know it was addressed. That's what I can tell you about that.
Are these positions supposed to be advertised?
Are these positions supposed to be advertised?
No, they don't have to be.
Okay. But nevertheless, so is there a...
If you have a legitimate candidate who's a New Brunswick resident and has the skill sets you're looking for, there's... Why should you not feel as if you can go forward with making an employment offer?
Okay. Yes, Mr. Cradville?
Mr. Baycorn's not a New Brunswick resident, correct?
I don't believe he is. Mr. Barber is.
Mr. Barber is. Mr. Baycorn is not.
Gotcha. And so is there or is there not a restructuring happening within the administration department of the police department?
Unless...
Captain Sabo?
No, there is not. Unless it's a part of the services department. I might have been confused in the wording. The services unit where Mr. Barber is working for was restructured as far as him taking, obviously, an active role in running that unit. It has nothing to do with the administration per se of the police department.
Gotcha. So restructuring the service unit. Mr. Barber is now in charge of the service unit. Can you tell me, who does he answer to? Who does he report to?
Who does he report to? Captain?
He reports to Captain Milligan.
Captain Milligan. And how many people work under Mr. Barber?
I believe he has one individual that works under him.
One individual. Okay.
A civilian officer.
All right. I'll move on from the police issues, but I do want to just say that real quickly, I do stand in support with all the victims of police brutality in New Brunswick. And I encourage them to file complaints, not just in New Brunswick, but at other levels as well. I'd like to ask the council, how do you feel about voting rights and all these reforms that are being talked about potentially to the electoral system, like same-day voter registration? Are these things that you support, like your fellow Democrats?
I don't really know much about the issue, Mr. Cradville, to speak about it at this time.
I would encourage you to look into it, especially someone who runs for election. It's a big deal. It's a very big deal that people get the right to vote. And I think you should stand with folks who support making it easier to access. I also want to ask about paid sick leave. I understand you had a meeting. And is it true that you're now going to support a paid sick leave ordinance in New Brunswick?
That is true, Mr. Cradville. We did have a meeting on Monday. I attended the meeting. So we've got Councilwoman Escobar along with the mayor, the gentleman Charles over there from Esperanza, Mr. Rowe, and some other people. And we had a very positive meeting where the mayor, Ms. Escobar, myself, and people like you in the square had questions. We had a great dialogue. We met for just about two hours. And I believe we're moving forward in the right direction. We all have some questions that we're going to follow up on and get some answers to. And I believe in time... I can't give you a specific time. Then we'll be moving in that direction.
Okay. And can you just ask the other three members of the council? Are they going to support the paid sick leave?
Well, I think... I don't know if I want to put them on the spot like that, but I think they may. They all have questions that they would like to... They can speak for themselves.
I always have. Always had some questions, so it's coming over.
Mr. White?
Yes. I'm going to look at older positions, just like we always do. Move in a responsible way.
Thank you. Ms. Marla?
I can only agree with my own face.
Correct. Please support paid sick leave. The overwhelming majority of people want you to do this.
We're moving towards that goal. Thank you.
First, I want to ask Councilman Sham. Did you do the research? Did you do the research that I requested?
I'm not a county attorney.
Oh, a city attorney?
Yeah, I got you.
Well, you're not a county attorney. Did you do the research that I requested?
Did you do any of the research?
Well, you asked me a question. I got it wrong, so I thought that was the end of the test.
I thought you would do some due diligence on African American entities so you could have an understanding of what we deal with on a daily basis, on a yearly basis.
I might have done a little more research. I heard there's a big date coming up on the 19th of June.
Juneteenth?
Juneteenth.
Yeah. You've got to do a little better than that.
I know what it's about. It's a day of celebration, of liberation, starting in Texas, I believe. And it's spreading throughout the country. And I think some towns in New Jersey are going to celebrate this year.
Well, it's kind of... It's not liberation because the Emancipation Proclamation really wasn't a law. So they really weren't truly liberated. I'll talk outside.
But you can tell me your hat later. That's fine.
Just noticing the demeanor of... This has nothing to do with what I came here to speak about, but just noticing the demeanor of some employees of African... African-American employees that work for the city and the, you know, like the manner they face when it comes to like issues that other African-Americans deal with. It's like some type of joke to them. Like, you know, I look at the city employees, and I know which one of the city employees. I know which one's smart. And, you know, it's like everything... And they know that I'm coming here for an issue that happened on Tuesday. I'll get to that. But it's like it's a joke to them. But the minute that one, somebody in the administration or in the city calls them a nigger, they're secretly calling me, asking me to help them out. But when we're dealing with our issues, it's a joke and it's a laugh, but they secretly call Tormel Pittman, "Hey, such-and-such just called me a nigger." Such-and-such said a nigger.
You don't have to say that. Just say the N-word.
No, I don't know. There's about 450 N-words in addition there. So I'm going to specifically tell you which one I'm talking about.
Okay. It makes you feel better to say it than you say it.
No, she made you feel better.
No, it doesn't. Doesn't make you feel better.
Okay. There was a community forum yesterday at Mount Zion Church. Councilman Fleming was there. He had to run out of another meeting. Zeus was there. And my question to the forum was, why wasn't Police Director Anthony Caputo present? Because you had Police Director Kim McCormick there and other police directors, Allen Carr, police chiefs all around. The only person... It was ironic because this was a forum in New Brunswick, but the New Brunswick Police Director wasn't present. They sent the community liaison and, you know, Councilman Fleming was there.
Did they send anybody from the police department?
No.
There was nobody from the police department?
No.
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 Mr. Captain Sabo, do you know if anybody else from the police department there?
Sergeant Sardini was there. Sergeant Sardini was there as a community outreach supervisor.
Oh, Sergeant Sardini?
Yes.
As a community outreach supervisor.
Okay. So, no, I'm saying, you know, all the departments didn't have community outreach. They had, you know, higher-ranking law enforcement agents. And I'm saying, why wasn't a higher-ranking law enforcement agent present on behalf of New Brunswick?
I don't know that answer, sir. I don't know why he was there.
Can you get it for me?
We'll find out why he wasn't there.
Okay. A simple question, you know? Do you believe that there's police misconduct on the police force in New Brunswick to date?
Do I believe that there's police misconduct? Mr. Pittman, I'm sure that in the police department, everything is not 100% perfect.
Simple question. Do you believe?
I do not know.
No, I'm asking, do you believe that there's police misconduct on the New Brunswick police force to date?
Not that I know of.
You're going to say it in a lie? You're going to say it in a lie in my face?
I don't know of any.
You're going to lie? You're going to say it in a lie in my face?
Not lying to you, fix. I believe that there has been in the past, but I don't believe in the present moment.
Okay. So you believe that there's... So the minute there's no police misconduct, you don't believe that there's any?
I didn't say that. At this present time, I don't know of any. Has there been police misconduct in the past? Absolutely, there has. Let's look at the Richard Roth thing, Internal Affairs. That was police misconduct. I believe that there has been in the past. I'm not aware of any today.
So you're saying you don't believe that there's any today?
I don't know of any. I'm not... There could be out there, but I don't know personally of any. If you're asking Kevin Egan, personally, do I know of any? I don't know of any of today. Was there been some in the past? Yes.
Can you ask Captain Sabo, does he believe that there's any police misconduct in the New Brunswick police department?
I'll answer that. I'll gladly answer that. I urge you to come forward with anything that you know, Tormel, or anybody else in the city, and let us know of any conduct because we will be happy, happy to investigate it to its fullest.
Please, please, everybody, shout it out.
If anyone hears anything, I'm telling you, bring it forward to us. If you want to see me in the hallway afterwards, I'm...
If anybody shouts out, you have to leave the room. Okay? Because we can't have that type of conversation.
What do you mean? Zeus make them leave?
No. I'm just trying to get... I don't want anyone yelling.
If there's anything... Yes, it means Tormel. There you go. I mean, how do you even take him serious?
Because you answered my question.
I just answered your question. You know somebody? Bring it forward.
No, I...
Excuse me. We're not going to get into a shouting at you or on the copy right off. Please, everybody's respecting when you're speaking. Please have the respect and don't make physical things like you just did, back and forth to one another. It's not cool.
I asked you to ask him, does he believe that there's any police misconduct on the New Brunswick Police Department force to date? This is not a hard question.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Okay.
If I know of anything, it would be investigated right now.
He says absolutely not.
Correct.
He just got up and told the young lady that there's programs for police misconduct at the New Brunswick Police Department.
To prevent police brutality.
There's programs.
Listen, I'm telling you right now. I'm telling everybody right now. We're not going to start talking in between the judges. I'm running this meeting. And if you guys, if you can't talk properly and have a conversation properly, then you're not going to talk no more. That's just the end of it. So please, make your point, ask your questions, and let's move on, please. Trying to give you a fair time here, not trying to cause anybody names.
Mr. Egan, you're one of the most disrespectful men I've ever met in my life.
Really? Really? Really, you're really... Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thing is, I'm asking simple questions.
He said no. He said no. He said his answer was no.
Okay.
So let's move on.
Okay. Okay. So we're wasting city funding on programs that are relevant?
Go ahead.
Right.
Just continue, Mr. Pittman. This is a public... You have a public forum here. No one has to sit here and answer all your questions. You know, this is not a question-and-answer period. This is a public debate here.
And you know what you are? You're an elected official.
That's right.
You're an elected official. And the minute someone asks you about police misconduct, the first thing you say is, "I don't have any power." No, you don't have any power to discipline an officer, but you do have power to pass legislation to prevent them from misconduct. And you don't exercise that right. So you're a part of the problem.
Yes, sir. Yes. Exactly.
And the problem that I have here is, you're not African-American. I have the witness of footage. Did you see the footage that Captain Sabo sent?
I did see the footage, sir.
What was your impression of the footage?
My impression of the footage is, I don't... What happened before and before and after. I mean, all I saw was cops arresting a woman. That's what I saw. I didn't see why she got arrested. I don't think they would... I mean, do you think they just went up to her and arrested her for no reason?
Well, if you do any due diligence on... Remember, there were about five officers, right? On a single female.
I know.
Let's do the due diligence of police in general. Six out of every 10 police commit domestic violence on a significant other. That's a fact. That's proven statistic.
Where's that proven? Where's that statistic?
That's what... Google it.
All right, okay.
Google it.
Okay.
And the thing is, so you've seen the footage. Can you show me footage of a white female being treated in that manner? On film? Have you ever seen footage of a white female being treated in the manner that Parisha Mache? Can you explain to me the fact that Parisha Mache possibly could have been a college student? Can you show me footage of a college female being treated in that manner?
I can't show you that.
New Brunswick just had, a few months ago, New Brunswick just hired a black female officer. So you mean to tell me, say, for instance, that female wasn't a police officer at Geofanelli's on Tuesday, coming out of there with a slice of pizza? You mean to tell me she's possible being subject to that type of harsh punishment?
Mr. Cradville, pardon me, Mr. Cradville. Mr. Pittman, I don't know what happened before and after. I don't know the circumstances of what happened. It's under investigation.
Did you ask?
What went into the investigation turns out?
Did you ask?
I just saw the video before I came here tonight.
So your impression is you don't know what happened?
My impression is, I saw what happened and I don't know what led up to what happened.
Forget what led up. Forget the beginning. Forget what happened afterwards. I'm asking you about what you saw.
I saw a woman being taken down and being arrested by three police officers.
And you feel like that was a proper manner?
Excuse me?
You feel like they took her?
I don't know the circumstances. I don't know if the circumstances...
I didn't ask that.
So your time is up.
I'm asking what you saw.
Yes, sir, Captain Sabo.
I just like, Tormel, I've made hundreds and hundreds arrests in 24 years as a police officer. I'd like you to tell me the proper way to arrest someone that resists arrest. I'd love to hear that. I'd love to hear that, Tormel.
The proper way to arrest?
Listen to me. You tell it to me. But your time is up, sir. Finish up what you have to say, and that's it.
He said to tell the proper way to arrest someone?
Correct. That's what he said.
You're saying that everything is done wrong?
Someone that's resisting arrest.
Someone's resisting arrest is not easy to take that person without injuring them.
Through the chair. Through the chair, please. You have to talk on some chairs.
It is not easy to arrest someone that does not want to be arrested. Everyone should know that. And the biggest thing you try to do is not injure that person as a result of making that arrest. If Mr. Pittman has some new theory on how to make arrests, I'd love for him to go to the state police or New Brunswick and explain to us how they're going to do that.
I'll help you all right now. When I give you this information,